National arts organizations, including the Texas Commission on the Arts, develop and administer arts programming and initiatives and support local artists, arts organizations, and cultural institutions through sub-granting programs. Commissioners approved tax refunds over $500 to various McAllen taxpayers. Under bids and contracts, commissioners approved an award of contract to Celso Gonzalez Construction of Mission Texas for the construction of Swattis Park sidewalks and parking lot improvements in the amount of $61,107. Commissioners approved an award of contract to Negrete and Coler Architects LLP of Austin, Texas for architectural design services for the McAllen Police Department Indoor Firearms Training Facility in the amount of $848,000. Under ordinances, commissioners approved a mid-year budget amendment for adjusted expenses for ongoing projects for various departments. Under resolutions, commissioners authorized the grant submission to the U.S. Department of Transportation for funding under the FY25 Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program in the amount of $4,707,208. The city of McAllen is seeking funding for the construction of an underground pedestrian crossing. The grant, if awarded, has a 20% local match required, which would amount to $1,176,802. Under managers' report, commissioners heard from Finance Director Sonia Resendez, who presented the quarterly investment report for the quarter ending December 31, 2024, which is in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and the city's investment policy. The ending book value for the quarter was $184,526,680. The weighted average yield to maturity was 4.29%. The quarterly investment report was reviewed by the Audit Investment Committee. We hope you enjoyed this recap of your McAllen City Commission meeting. Meetings are set for the second and fourth Monday of each month. We also air the entire meeting on the McAllen Cable Network Spectrum 1300 on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. For the city of McAllen, I'm Sochi Elmora.
With the approaching severe rain, I would like to remind McAllen and the Rio Grande Valley residents to stay safe and be prepared. If possible, avoid driving, stay home. If you must drive, make sure you leave with plenty of time to account for slippery roads, potential road closures, and possible congestion.
And now for McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
Everybody, we have a welcome to tonight's City Commission meeting. I feel it's a joint meeting with our PUP, so we'll open up this meeting. Okay, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by Commissioner Pepe Cabeza de Barca.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, good evening, team members of the City Commission, residents, and guests as we gather here today. Let us invoke wisdom, empathy, and unity in our deliberations and decisions. May we approach our discussions with open minds, listening attentively to diverse perspectives, and working together toward the betterment of our community. Let our actions be guided by integrity and commitment to serve the common good. Let us now begin this meeting with respect and mutual understanding.
Amen. We have some proclamations, but we'll take item number one first.
Good afternoon. We're here to present the bank, the Depository Bank Services Contract Award Evaluation and Recommendation. Staff presented result, the results of the solicitation of the Depository Bank Services to the Audit and Investment Committee at its meeting held on May 29, 2025. The committee recommended approval to the City Commission and McAllen Public Utility Board that the contract be awarded to Plains Capital Bank, subject to depository contract, wire transfer agreement, safekeeping agreement, and lockbox services agreement acceptable to the city for the period of August 1, 2025 through July 31, 2028, with two one-year extensions at the discretion of the city.
Does anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions? I have not higher motion from the city to approve.
Second.
Oh, second. Okay, all in favor?
Say aye.
All against? Motion carries.
And I abstain, Mayor.
And that is the end of our joint meeting, I believe. So we'll recess so that we can...
And the utility board will adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're back from recess. We have two proclamations. First, we have National Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Commissioner Haddad. Anybody here for National Elder Abuse Awareness Month?
Anyone here for... Yes.
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Hi. City of McAllen proclamation. Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And as we age, we build momentum by accumulating, accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. Whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern affecting thousands across Texas with 123,852 reports made in 2024, yet it remains grossly underreported due to social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. Whereas adult abuse victims affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds, and all communities. Elder abuse is everyone's business, making it important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. I, Sebi Haddad, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of McAllen, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 National Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Villalobos and commissioners. Let me first thank you for proclaiming June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the city of McAllen. In a society that values the just treatment of all people, Elder Abuse Awareness Month reminds us of that elder abuse has implications for all of us, and it's so, it's important to find the right solutions to it. Therefore, it's critical that we continue to raise awareness and take steps to prevent it from, it in our communities. Educating the public on these issues and what to do when the suspected abuse neglect or financial exploitation of an older adult or individual with disabilities is crucial. The APS program will remain focused on raising awareness for elder abuse. On behalf of our program, I would like to thank all our first responders and all our judicial partners to their continued support in helping APS carry out their mission, which is to protect older adults and people with disabilities. It is through this collaboration that we are forming public and private partnerships to identify where stronger supports are needed and where existing connections must be reinforced as an essential first step towards defending our community against elder abuse. To report elder abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation, please call our hotline at 1-800-252-5400 or our website at www.texasabushotline.org. Thank you for your service and for your leadership in helping us work towards addressing this unreported issue of elder abuse.
Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge Elder Abuse Awareness Month. We'd had a lot of activities this month. I'm D.O. Choa with Silver Ribbon Community Partners, and we're a partner agency with Adult Protective Services, and I just want to give them a shout out for all their hard work, everything they do to go out and validate these cases and make sure our elderly are safe. And thank you to the commissioners for allowing us to have this and sharing the information with you guys. Thank you.
Next, we have another proclamation declaring Robert "Bobby" Calvillo Day. Commissioner Aguirre.
Family? Bobby?
David? And whoever wishes to come up representing the family? Good afternoon, everyone. One, this is an extremely special time, special day, special announcement, special proclamation. I want to do it nice and slowly, showing the importance of this day. This proclamation from the state of Texas, the county of Hidalgo, and also our great city of McAllen. Whereas Bobby Roberto Calvillo began his service as Executive Director of McAllen Affordable Homes, now known as Affordable Homes of South Texas, on July 8, 1996, marketing or making the beginning of a nearly 29-year legacy devoted to improving fam, living conditions, and expanding access of affordable home ownership for low and moderate income families in McAllen and the Rio Grande Valley. And whereas, under Bobby's visionary leadership, Osti grew from a small, local nonprofit into a widely respected state and national organization, improving substandard living conditions and making home ownership possible for thousands of families throughout McAllen, the Rio Grande Valley, and even as far as San Antonio and El Paso. And whereas Bobby's dedication was rooted in a profound belief in building homes, creating communities, and providing hope, leading always with compassion, integrity, and relentless purpose. And whereas Bobby's most well-known saying was, "This is the toughest job I've ever loved." A simple yet powerful reminder of the deep commitment and, and the heart he brought to his work each and every day. And whereas Bobby's legacy continues to inspire through the mission of Osti, the families he empowered, the colleagues, partners, and community members who carried his vision forward. Now here, I, Antonio Aguirre Juja, City Commissioner of the City of McAllen, by virtue of my authority vested in me by the mayor and the city commission, I do hereby proclaim July 8, 2025, Robert "Bobby" Calvillo Day. It's, uh, it's very hard to go through this. I think I've known the Calvillos and the family for that, that many years and more. And, uh, you know, we, we in this community have gone through the beauty of an inception of something that is being mimicked throughout, throughout, throughout the world because, you know, saying that within the valley or the state or the nation, no. McAllen Affordable Homes in its exemption and has gone through so many community involvement with the leadership of Bobby, it's, it's incredible to, to see that love of this community. And then all of the beautiful families that have benefited by, by what was created, you know, years ago, and what will continue on is, is, is unmeasurable. Thousands and thousands of families would not have had this opportunity if it wasn't for the community, but by far also the leadership of a man that gave his, gave his heart to what he believed, that home ownership is important, and it, and it brings, brings that, brings that meaning of life to so many. That importance is, is, is just unmeasurable. It's, like I said, it's been very hard since I, since I saw this, that I was going to read this today. It, uh, I, I remember all the friends and all of the people that served in the board and all of the, all of the ones that, that, that worked there at McAllen Affordable Homes, that, you know, they have a, they have a mission, they had a love, and, uh, and it wasn't for this leadership of, of this great man, uh, it wouldn't be what it is today. Who else would like to say? Go ahead.
True leadership is about creating the conditions where others can succeed. This first statement, this first statement I'm going to read on behalf of my beautiful sister-in-law, Bobby's wife. Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, friends, and community members, it means so much to be here with all of you today as we honor the life and legacy of my husband, Robert Bobby Calvillo. On behalf of our family, I want to express our heartfelt thanks to the city of McAllen and its commissioners for this beautiful proclamation declaring July 8 as Robert Bobby Calvillo Day. We are also grateful to our Osti family, Affordable Homes of South Texas, Inc., for initiating this meaningful tribute. Bobby began his journey with Affordable Homes on July 8, 1996 as Executive Director. From the beginning of his career, he approached the work with quiet determination and a deep sense of purpose. What started as a small nonprofit addressing substandard housing became a life-changing organization that helped thousands of families across McAllen and the Rio Grande Valley become homeowners and build stronger communities. For Bobby, it was never about recognition or praise. He was actually incredibly shy about receiving any recognition of any kind. Knowing Bobby, he would accept this honor. On behalf of his 70-plus employees that inspired him every day, he simply believed that everyone deserves a chance to live in a safe, stable home, and he worked every day to make that a reality. I wish with all my heart that Bobby could be here to witness this moment. I know his spirit is with us, and he would be moved by this honor, and more than anything, he would be proud that the work continues and that the mission lives on. Thank you for honoring and recognizing the legacy of a man who gave so much of himself to make McAllen and the Rio Grande Valley a better place. May July 8 serve as a reminder of what's possible when service is rooted in love, hope, and purpose. Thank you. The Calvillo family. And now on behalf of my father, on behalf of my dad, my 87-year-old dad, just a couple of quick comments, unless he wants to elbow me out of the way, which he's welcome to do. True leadership is about creating the conditions, about creating the conditions where others can succeed. To all of the city commissioners throughout the years, and all the board members, some of whom you see here today, to all of them, they created the conditions. They helped create the conditions where Bobby and the team could succeed. I think each of them will tell you, each of these employees that are here and others that didn't, that are not here today, will tell you that Bobby helped create the conditions where they could succeed. True leadership is about creating the conditions where others can succeed. And so to all of the mayors, all of the city commissioners, all of the board members, thank you, thank you, thank you. On behalf of the valley, God's country south, thank you.
Okay, next we have a public hearing.
Commissioners, mayor, good afternoon. All right, so for item 2A, we are going to remove number six from the consent agenda. So the rest of the items are, item number one is rezoning from R3A to R1. This is located at 3300 Freddie Gonzalez. It's west of 29th Street. PNZ recommended approval at the June 3 meeting. Items two and three are off of 11301 North 10th. So item number two is from C3 to M2, the new mixed use, and this is just west of 10th and north of Sprague. Item number three is also at the 11301 North 10th, and this is from the old R2 to the new R2. Item number four is rezoning from R3A to R1. This is located at 11, uh, 13100 North 38th. This is on 38th and just eight and a half mile. Item number five is R3A to R1, and this is at 13501 North Sherry Road, just south of the Valderra at tres lagos. Item number seven, eight, nine, and 10, our city-initiated rezoning, and this is for the Cielo Vista subdivision and Los Encinos. Item number 11 is a condition to use permit for the Catholic Diocese of Brownsville for, for their church. I guess it's going to be their, I'm sorry. It's going to be the new parish hall, so it's one, it's going to have the adoration chapel, private prayer ceremonies, private meeting rooms, and other religious church-related events.
Do we have anybody to speak against any of these items? Anybody to speak against any of these items?
John? John? I think you, you have number six?
That one was pulled.
No, that's pulled. That was pulled?
Yes, sir.
Anybody to speak against any of those items does not have a motion.
So move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, item six.
So item six, this property is located at 13801 North 23rd Street on the corner of North 23rd and Russell Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone from R1 to R2 to build townhome lots. The R2, the new R2 does allow for triplex and fourplex, however, those lots need to be at least a minimum of 9,000 square feet. How, so at, on those, yes, you will be able to do 43 lots, however, you have to take into account the streets, alleys that are required, so it will reduce those amount of lots. As far as with the minimum townhome lot size, that's at 2,250, but as well, yes, you could put in 174, however, once you put in the streets, alleys, and everything else, it reduces the number of, of lots that are actually going to be placed. At the Planning Zoning Commission meeting of June 3, we did have two neighbors in opposition of the request. The board did discuss the items, and three members voted to approve the item, and one member voted to disapprove the item.
Okay, and I think we have some individuals to speak regarding the item. I think it's a... Thank you all for being here today to listen to their concerns about this rezone of this property from R1 single-family residential district to an R2 medium-density residential district. This particular tract of land is located on the southwest corner of Russell and Depot Road, also known as 23rd Street, and it's located in an area that has been developed south of Russell Road into estate-type lots, which consist of half-acre or greater-sized tracts with large homes and accessory buildings such as barns, et cetera. The area has been developed well over the last 20 or 30 years in North McAllen, and this particular tract extends to the edge of the City of McAllen and has been zoned R1, which is consistent with the market area. However, we do recognize this area is growing with the roads' development to the west along Ware Road and Russell Road. The increased traffic in this area is going to be a concern. In my research in preparation for today, I discovered that an existing right-of-way project for Russell Road is underway, which will expand Russell from the City of Edinburgh to Ware Road, a project that's spearheaded by Hidalgo County Precinct Number 4. This particular project will continue to increase the traffic levels in this area, and therefore, my clients are fighting to maintain their existing R1 single-family residential zone that they have long had, along with others in the area. If I may, if I may approach, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I have some, just...
Unless somebody objects.
You may get to overrule them, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple pictures as exhibits, if I could distribute to everyone, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Millen.
Thank you.
Like I said, these are just pictures, overhead views of the property. One's a satellite image, which I labeled Exhibit A. The other is the planning and zoning map. Actually, it's from the McAllen GIS system that I've labeled Exhibit B. If you look at Exhibit B in particular, on the second page, it's clear that the subject property being zoned R2 does not conform with the surrounding area located in all directions of the subject property. The City of McAllen's own GIS mapping system indicates there will be two large, single-family residential developments, one directly to the west of the subject property and one located along the north side of the subject along Russell Road. Both are in the planning stages, and if located within the McAllen GIS system, must have preliminary approval, I assume. You can see Commissioners and Mr. Mayor in Exhibit B, and it's a little faint, I apologize, but the area that's the subject property is outlined in red. Just to the north of that, you can see that the subdivision or some kind of plat has been put onto the McAllen GIS system, indicating there is a subdivision, a large one, to the north, which is now just orchards, by the way. And you can't really see, but to the west, where the number 3 is, to the west of the subject property, that has apparently also been platted for a subdivision. My clients are located on the east side of Russell Road, on the corner, and this has been the home of Mickey and Anita Smith for decades. They're joining me here today. The subject property is located directly across the street from their home and will most certainly increase traffic directly in front of their home and at the intersection of Russell and 23rd Street. The proposed site will be in the middle of R1 zone tract in all directions. It will not conform to the city's past developments in which R2 or R3T-type zones are adjacent to higher-density-type uses, such as commercial use and/or R3 apartment-type use as a buffer, but will be in between residential tracts, which is not in conformity with what the City of McAllen has done for many years, that is, placing these types of developments next to higher-density uses, such as commercial or apartment developments. Again, if you look at Exhibit A, the first page, the satellite, you can see that the subject property is in blue, and to the west of the subject property, I'll represent to you, the gray area is R1, to the north is R1, to the east is R1. My point is that usually these R2-type designated areas are used as buffers, so perhaps a more appropriate area would be that gray shaded area, because to the west of that is a storage unit development, and to the west of that is a school. So if the subject area was moved in the gray shaded area, that would actually serve as a buffer, as the City of McAllen has done traditionally for decades, instead of putting the R2 designated area in the middle, being surrounded by R1. That's what we suggest would be a better use of the gray area, rather than R1, and we would submit that the subject area should remain R1. Surrounding that particular home with a higher-density use will certainly affect the market value of the Smiths' residence, as well as the residence you can see in the satellite. There's a residence right in the middle of this property that's totally surrounded on three sides by the subject property being proposed for R2. That house is going to be totally surrounded, is definitely going to affect its value. We haven't had the chance to speak with that property owner, but I imagine that they would be concerned by that as well in increasing the density in that area. It also concerns me that I heard just a little while ago that there's possibly 174 townhomes, there's enough room for 174 townhomes in this development with 43 lots, and that, again, along with the increased traffic that that extension of Russell Road's going to create, 173 townhomes with all the people living in it is going to really, really make this area extremely dense and extremely densely used and a lot of traffic. And so it's for this reason that we're asking the commission to provide relief in this area, to not increase the density and traffic, and maintain the R1 zone, which is consistent with the market and consistent with the demand in this region of northern McAllen. I understand that the planning and zoning have represented that this is consistent with the city's, we used to call it the Foresight Plan when I was on PNZ, I think it may be called something else now that's escaping me, but while there are, it is consistent in that there are mixed uses considered in that plan, I don't think it's consistent in how the city has developed in the past, like I said, because, again, although there are mixed uses allowed, usually these type of developments are serving as buffers. Here, this is clearly not a buffer. Here, this is clearly right-stuck in the middle of R1 residential. If Mr. Mayor, you and the Commissioners could indulge us a little while longer, Ms. Smith would like also to make a statement to the Commissioners and to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. My name is Anita Smith, and I am in opposition of this rezoning. I was surprised and a bit stunned at the PNZ meeting when their department recommended approval, but what appeared to me to be the lack of anyone calling in to complain or oppose the rezoning. I did not know that I could or even should have called them prior to that meeting to lodge a complaint or tell them I didn't want it. The notice that I received was only a few days prior to their meeting, and it simply stated that all interested citizens are invited to appear and be heard. So my son and I, who is here with me today, we did go to that meeting, and we did voice our concerns and our opposition. And by the way, there are only three of us within this 200-foot requirement to get notices of rezoning. There are a lot of reasons we understand why the city should be concerned with rezoning in this area. John has mentioned most of them. It's the lack of infrastructure, congested traffic to and from three schools and a daycare center, all at the intersection of Russell and Ruth Roads, which are just right down the street. One of those schools, my husband and his partner built, and then two others popped up. So nine months out of the year already, we have a lot of traffic that is bumper-to-bumper at this intersection at the corner of our home. There are also issues with the road flooding in this area. But for me, this is very personal, and I tend to get emotional about it. We own the corner 10 acres just east of this property where we have built our dream home. We've been there for over 20 years and hope to be there another 20 years, and then pass it on to our sons and grandchildren. So there is no chance that it will be broken up and divided into anything smaller. If this rezoning is allowed and the developer puts in his townhouse development, it will greatly impact the value of our property and our neighbors' properties. The overall development trend in this area is single-family residences and is also acknowledged as such by the Planning and Zoning Department for the city. Every house on Depot from 107 to Russell and beyond to Monte Cristo are single-family homes, which do vary in size, but all have substantial yards, and many like ours have acreage for their yards. We knew when we bought our property that the land across the street from us would one day be developed, but were confident that it would become a single-family residence, a residential subdivision similar to Ravenswood, which the same person who owns that property in question also developed Ravenswood, and their two subdivisions would be adjacent to each other. But more important, as John mentioned to you, there is an existing 3,000-square-foot single-family home that sits pretty much in the middle of this tract where they want to develop townhouses. And to surround this house with towering townhouses, in my opinion, will look downright strange and out of place, and not consistent with the surrounding developed properties. So I'm asking you to please don't devalue our property and our neighbors' properties. I agree that there is a place for townhouses, but this corner just isn't it. And I keep calling our street 2 Depot Road. I wanted to point out, I know the city is 23rd Street, and I know we're part of the city, but when you annexed us, we not only did not get any of the city services brought to us, we also were not given a city street address so that McAllen Post Office would deliver mail to us. So for us and others living on this road, our address is Depot Road, Edinburgh. The one and only thing that you did do when you annexed us was to designate the single-family residences for our area, and I'm asking you, please, keep it that way. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Doug Smith. You just heard from my mother, 13916 North Depot Road. Mr. Millen put it, pretty much said everything I wanted to say. I just wanted to point out that two out of the four people, landowners affected, are here in objection, which constitutes 50%, which is greater than a 20% rule for the city. That's all I want to point out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, forgive me for forgetting. I was on Planning and Zoning for six years and the Zoning Board of Adjustments for two, so I should have remembered to give you my address, 4107 North 22nd Street, McAllen. But we appreciate you all listening. As Doug Smith said, and Mrs. Smith said, we would respectfully ask that the commission and you, Mr. Mayor, reject the rezoning request, and I believe the other neighboring landowner, Mr. Rubio Salinas, is here also to say his piece. Thank you very much for your attention and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Rubio Salinas. I'm an attorney. I own the property just to the south of Mrs. Smith. She has the north 10 acres, I have the south 10 acres. My wife and I bought that property approximately 26 years ago. We have invested a lot of money, time, love, and effort into that property. I agree with everything that they have presented to you today. We like the area the way it is. We think it's not a great idea to bring in a multifamily designation to that area. It will, it's already congested. We have schools in that area. If you bring in all these other homes, that's just going to get, it's just going to be worse for the public there. It's going to be a safety concern. It's just a two-lane street there. There's no middle-turning lane. That's the way it is going north, going east, and west. I would just like to ask the commission to not approve the request or the recommendation from Planning and Zoning. I would like for the commission to leave this property the way it is. We love the area. I know Ms. Jane Cross said she wants to get away from McAllen. We don't want to get away from McAllen. We're in McAllen. We love McAllen. We want to stay in McAllen, but we want our property the way it is. So we're just asking you to please take that into account. And, you know, I used to be the mayor of Farr from 1990 through 1994, as a practicing lawyer, as a former mayor of the City of Farr, and I chose your city to live in. And I love McAllen, so I'm just asking you, please leave our area the way it is. Thank you.
Anybody else to speak against the item? Do we have anybody to speak for the item?
I need the right. It's going to be really weird.
But you have a right.
Jane Cross, my address is 2413 Chapin Road. I live in a quarter collector's street that'll never be built, so I understand about all of this. It's 9.2 acres, give or take. I would love, and if you guys do vote against that, which is, you know, my best years are ahead of me, and my best days are ahead of me, so whatever happens, I am grateful for everything that you guys do. But if this doesn't go through, I would be more than happy to sell the 9.2 acres to anyone. So, and I think Mrs. Smith is right. I think it would be great if somebody bought it and put in their little house or their barn. I think that would be fabulous. So, but I don't know if that's possible, and if anybody wants to know, you can call my realtor, Charles Morena, and he will be more than happy to sell it to you. So whatever happens, I understand that you guys have to do what you have to do, and the giant piece out of the middle of this, right here?
The trailers.
Okay. What happened is my dad, who was a developer and, you know, developed Mission, McAllen, a whole bunch of stuff, Tom Cross, he, when he got up in age, he decided that he wanted to sell something, and he sold that piece right out of the middle. And I didn't even know it was sold, and because I wasn't allowed to know anything until I was 50. Thank you, Dad. And so somehow or another, I was at my office, and this man comes up and goes, "We're getting ready to build." And I said, "And where are you building?" And he told me, and I said, "Well, who did that?" I then found out my dad sold that piece of property. That's when his trustee said, "No, you can't do anything anymore, Tom." So time went on. I tried to get them to move from there, because I own the property that Tony bought, who paid for my divorce, thank you, and I tried to get them back to Ruth Road. And of course, I said, "23rd's going to be really busy, and you probably should want over there." Of course, the woman was not a very nice lady, and she said, "I don't want to do that." Okay? And then came on, and then it went on, and they said, "Yes, we should have done that." They didn't want any more. And that little piece, I don't know if you can see that little piece, it's in your little side thing, that's not real. The appraisal district dropped the ball, and that really is part of the nine acres, or no, because they wanted less on 23rd and more in the back, so we did a 2.2-acre swap, and David Crook did the work, and the appraisal district kind of dropped the ball and didn't get it where it was. That little piece, 2.2 acres, was done for me, but all of the paperwork is done, and the deeds were properly done. So lady tried to sell it, that's how I know. So whatever you guys do, I understand. I'm grateful for everything that happens, and maybe this is just a way of somebody coming and buying the whole enchilada from me. So whatever you guys do, I appreciate it. So I don't, it's kind of strange, right? It's not pro, it's not against, but you never know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
Anybody else?
And I guess just one other thing, just as part of Chacy's and the Hurdine subdivision, and that between Chacy's and the Hurdine and this proposal here, we did require 8 and 3/4 miles along the south side, so the development has been working with bringing in traffic or taking traffic out of this corner area, so they are proposing 8 and 3/4 mile on the south side of the property. That will curve through the property to the west...
Thank you, Mrs. Cross.
Anybody else?
And I guess just one other thing, just as part of Chaysa de Jardine subdivision and that between Chaysa de Jardine and this proposal here, we did require eight and three-quarter miles along the south side. So the development has been working with bringing in traffic or taking traffic out of this corner area. So they, they are proposing eight and three-quarter mile on the south side of the property. That will curve through the property to the west, through the back of Chaysa de Jardine and up through, I forget, the north-south street of the west, west of Chaysa de Jardine.
Okay. Anybody else for or against? The commission, we have stuff to deal with. So I think a lot of the times the issue that we have is the property values or the property of somebody that wants to develop versus somebody, for example, like here. Traffic to me is really never really an item because that's what streets are for. You have somebody in a one acre, ten acre, doesn't take up any, create any traffic, others will. But then, of course, you want the piece which you've had before all your life. The issue we have now is we have the UDC. Yes. Which allows for this and that's something that the city is pushing for because of density, because of traffic, because everything we do, we have to get in our car to go somewhere, which is what we're trying to get away from. So property values, that never concerns me. I've never seen the appraisal district go down no matter what. Okay? Because as a matter of fact, I know everybody's out there always trying to reduce it. So that's what you all need to consider. Questions, comments? What do you all think?
Well, Mr. Mayor, one point of clarification, if I may, which is this item does not require a supermajority. It only requires a simple majority.
And good. Well, how does it, what's going on here? What, what happened?
It has a favorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and there has not been a verified petition submitted in opposition.
Okay. And, and those are the issues we have to look at. You know, somebody trying to develop, somebody nod and it's, it's a hard issue a lot of the times, but that's what we're here for.
Mr. Mayor, I agree for the most part, especially when it comes to property evaluations. We've all seen the last fifteen, twenty years, it's just been a continuation as our city and our county grows in popularity and populace. You know, the appraisal values have, have gone very, very high. I don't think, I don't see any trend changing that in the near future. I certainly am one. I have a history of, of supporting and a proponent of multifamily development, making housing affordable in our community for those who can't buy or purchase a single-family home. Because living the American dream sometimes starts living in an apartment, just the way I did. However, it's always, as in real estate, the notion of location, location, location. The concern that I have is because this is a higher density, a higher use than a single-family is the proximity to that intersection. And I'm very well aware that precinct four is in fact in at least a design phase and ultimately a construction phase for Russell Road, you know, E.G., mile seventeen and a half. I don't have or haven't seen any plans for Depot Road. For those who grew up and are familiar with Depot Road and Russell Road, it's a county road. There is no curb and gutter, there's no stormwater sewer. That area has always been prone to flooding as what was experienced as recent as not even four weeks ago. I have gone in the morning to go through that school. There are three schools at the intersection of Twenty-ninth and mile seventeen and a half, which is less than a quarter of a mile or half a mile from the Depot-Russell Road intersection. I've seen traffic go both ways in the morning and on one instance in the afternoon. I'm concerned about the queuing of vehicles at a four-way stop, which I understand is right there on Russell and Depot Road. And the proximity of this type of rezoning creates more rooftops in the same area as compared to single-family. And as all, as we all know, with more rooftops come, because we don't like public transportation down in the valley, we have more motor vehicles. And so I'm concerned about the queuing problems. I don't see anything in, in McAllen where we're going to expand Depot Road, at least not without some sort of joint agreement with the state of Edinburgh, because from Chapin Road south to one oh seven, that's Edinburgh. So any future expansion would have to require the cooperation of the state of Edinburgh. So I don't see on a Depot Road, which is a county road, it doesn't even have a center line. There's not even a, a, a safety zone on the right side of each, of each lane. All you have is swales. So my concern is not necessarily the values, as reiterated by the mayor. My concern is the traffic or the potential for more development. And Mr. Sotelo, I did have one question, even though it's outside the ETJ on the north side of mile seventeen and a half, and though I know it hasn't been built and you had stated that it's an orchard, there was a plan or at some point a potential plat for single-family homes?
Correct, yes, sir. There was.
Okay. So, so, so somewhere, you know, this board and the Planning and Zoning Commission years back when it annexed this area, which actually wasn't too long ago in the distant past, saw that there was a congruence of continuing single-family homes, the type of residence where Mr. Salinas and Mrs. Smith and her family have relied on since annexation, and see that in their foreseeable future as continuing single-family homes. I understand the city continues to grow, but if you go beyond a half a mile to a mile radius, the only multifamily zoning is off near the corner of Chapin and Twenty-ninth. And that's a pretty large trap, parcel there. But everything around that intersection of Twenty-ninth and Russell and certainly the intersection of Russell and Depot is all single-family. You know, I'm also big on neighborhood preservation. And one of the things I cited and Mr. Millen had also cited too is this type of development should be further away. Because at least by the two streets to allow egress and ingress to the subdivision, one would tap into Russell Road and the other would tap into Depot. The one on Russell Road is concerning because of how close it would be to that intersection. And again, I don't know how far, but I imagine the next four or five years Russell Road be expanded to at least a four-lane street or road. But I don't believe that, you know, the, the coming and going of cars from that subdivision is going to interfere with the orderly and continuous flow of traffic in that intersection as long as it remains a four-way stop. Those are the matters that I looked at and have been looking at over the last week or so when it was brought to my attention about the rezoning. Again, it's about location, location. I just don't feel, or rather, I don't, I don't base decisions on emotions. Based on the facts of what's being proposed, it's not a good fit for this area.
Anybody else? Because at, at the very end, whatever you all decide is gonna be like that for a while. My biggest concern is always not in my backyard. And I agree, a lot of times we don't want that, but I want everybody to consider everything because of what we have done in the past. If you all don't think it's a fit of what we're looking for in the future, we'll stop it.
Well, what, one of the, one of the things is it has, it's asking for a rezoning, but it doesn't, it, it doesn't bring in what it will rezone to other than townhomes.
Correct.
Okay? So they didn't put a, a pud, they, they didn't put any type of a pud to it. They just want it rezoned, right?
Correct.
So a pud would have told us exactly what they're going to build there.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So when you presented, Mr. Sotelo, that you could have a hundred and seventy some odd, whatever.
Yes.
That really is irrelevant to what the reality could be.
Correct.
And, and the decision that we make here is only rezoning. It's not approving a plat, okay? So that could make sense or could not make sense. But just approving a rezoning, could, you could approve an apartment complex to this, correct or not?
Not, so it's not for-
So this is just for townhomes?
Just, this would be triplex or fourplex or townhomes. So they wouldn't be apartment complexes.
So, so then, so the, so would your, again, how many units there would actually be?
That's, I, I wouldn't tell you because like I told you, like it would have, you have to incorporate the street and then apartments require alleys, so you have to add in the streets, the alleys, so that reduces the number significantly.
So the decision is just to allow a zoning pinch?
That's correct.
To an R two?
Mayor, rest of the board, I make a motion to deny the request made by the applicant for the rezoning as requested.
Is there a second?
Just the ways presented, I have difficulty to approve it because we don't know who's gonna go in. A PUD will be something that was gonna guide us a little bit better.
Right.
But there's no PUD over there. So I second the motion of-
Okay, there being a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Captain.
Thank you. Okay, item B one is requested a rezon. This property is located on south, at, at two-two-one South Eighth Street. It's at the corner of South Eighth and Chicago. And the applicant is requesting a rezon from R one to R two. However, this is one of the pockets of the R one that is left in this area. The applicant, the applicant is proposing to build two townhomes and one residential home. The lot total square footage is about thirteen thousand four hundred, thirteen thousand four hundred square feet. It measured about a hundred by a hundred and thirty-four. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June third, no one appeared in opposition of the request and the board voted to recommend disapproval.
Anybody here on that item? Message?
I have to abstain.
This is two B three?
No. B one. I'm sorry.
It's which one?
B one. Two-two-one, South Eighth.
Hold on for a second, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to disapprove the, the relief requested by the applicant to rezon from R one to R two.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Guys, for lack of a second. Is there another motion, any questions, comments?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm still studying.
Yeah, I think they're still reading it, Mayor.
Mayor, this item will require a supermajority because P and Z recommended disapproval.
What, what was your, your?
My motion was to disapprove the relief requested to rezon.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second to approve? Do I hear a second?
I hear a second.
Okay, they're picking a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
One?
Well, it requires a supermajority.
It requires a supermajority, so it's gonna die.
Votes.
Okay, there was one against.
There's only one against, so it passes.
Passes. Motion passes. Okay, next item.
Item B two, the property is located at three thousand South Benson, which is on the south Benson and new house. The applicant is proposing to rezon from R one to C two in order to convert the house onto, into an event center. The neighbor to the west of this proposal of the, is subdividing the parcel for a new single-family lot. And the property owner to the south is working with the drainage district to acquire some of the lake for the drainage improvements that hopefully that will develop the property to the north. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June the third, two people appeared in opposition of the request. The board members voted to recommend disapproval of the rezoning request.
Okay, anybody speak against this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jesse Barba. I'm at nine hundred East Lakeview, McAllen, Texas. I represent the property owner of the surrounding property. If you'd like, you can bring the picture up and I'll show you. We originally purchased about two hundred acres surrounding this property. This, we bought it from the Benson family. This particular site is the old Benson home site, Lloyd Benson, Senator Lloyd Benson used to live here. And if you can see from this aerial, he also liked to shoot skeet. You'll see there on the northwest corner is the skeet range and he had an orange orchard just to the north. We eventually developed the area and you see the residential lots to the north, to the east. And if you could zoom out, if you could, you'd see some more development to the northwest. We believe as we bought, for purposes of the purchase, this area was for residential community. The applicant is proposing to, this carve-out right here, which we didn't acquire, it's the, the home site itself. It was not sold to us. It rolled independently into the estate and several years later, it was sold to the current applicant. It's, he's probably the third person in the history of the last hundred years to own that property. So that property hasn't been outside of the Benson family for quite some time, but now he would like to convert it to a commercial use. We are opposed to that. We do not feel that it's appropriate. There's a re-subdivision process going through right now. We believe it should remain the character of a residential community. We don't think that the, it's integrated properly into the, into the larger scheme. Also, this is a, there's a floodway over this. I'm not sure how we're gonna negotiate proper drainage for this area. We're trying to develop to the west, to the northwest. So if you pulled out again, you'd see the parts that was not developed, it's just one big tract, one big tax tract.
Oh, make it easy. This requires a supermajority?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, Mayor, well.
This is, this is the one on, on South Benson? Like there were the, or that, they're making that little event, well, that portion, I don't know what they have there.
Do we have the applicant?
My English is not very good, but I will try my best.
That's perfectly fine. You're doing just fine.
Yes, we bought not, not directly from the Benson, the property, from the widow of Chris Bradley. He's the one that, the person that bought from the Benson. And then in an accident, Chris passed away and I bought it from the widow, Natalie Padilla. Is the one that I bought from. I'm the neighbor that is just next, next to the property. I mean, and, and on the, well, if you're seeing right now the map, on the right side. All that property is five acres. You can see the horses there and you can see some animals. They're all mine.
That's, on ten la entrada de abuelas.
Yeah, ahí la entrada muy bonita. Eso es mi casa. And when we bought, because I was the neighbor and I knew Chris and he was a friend of mine and Natalia tried to give me the first chance to, to, to buy it. And I actually, I, I don't want to change the, the, the house. I wanna, I wanna leave it like that because I think it's a historical house of McAllen. It was built in nineteen fifty-two by Kenneth Benson, the, the son of Dolly and, and Lloyd Senior. And he, he make a lot of, of very good projects. He make the, I, I didn't know, he makes the Pan American University and he did the Houston Rockets. So I know that it's a very big architecture here in, in, in the valley too. So what I want to do is preserve the house and, but I, I don't want to leave in the house because I live just next to the house. So, but I don't want to sell it or, or rent it. I think it's a historical house. What I want to do is, it's, you can call it an event center, but it's more like just to make like, I don't know, weddings or quinceañeras or bautismos. And I, I have, I present a lot of the things that they, they live in the house because I want to preserve the historical meaning of the house and put memorials of the Benson family and everything so I can show it to the people and they can go there and, and I want to go like in the schools too, like if the schools want to, to go there and have picnics, something like maybe Quinta Masatlán, something like that. I mean, not, not as big as, but something like that. I want to preserve the historical of the, of the property, but for me to do that, it needs to be commercial. That is the problem. But I don't want to move nothing. And it has a very beautiful lake and everything, so I wanted to do it for, for events and, and for the schools so they can go there too. I mean, yes, it's, it's a business because it, it needs to be a business to be, so it needs to be sustainable. But I mean, that is the only, but I mean, if they, if, if you want to put me like, I can pass you the commercial permit, but it's gonna be a lien that you, you can't make these things or these, these other things or a commercial center or, or I don't know, a nightclub or whatever, I don't have a problem to sign it. I mean, because it's not my idea to do that. Well, my idea is to preserve the property and just to show it to, to McAllen and because I think it's a treasure of McAllen, this property.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
There's one more.
Buenas tardes. ¿Puedo hablar español?
Sí.
Yo soy vecino. Yo estoy construyendo. Yo compré, compré un terreno al lado de, de la casa del señor. Y yo creo, digo, yo no estoy, no me opongo que, que él quiera hacer algo de eventos. Nada más que yo, la única cosa es, digo, no me molesta porque él tipo tener estacionamiento y todo, el ruido. El ruido bastante, sí se va a escuchar, es al aire libre. Y eso es lo único que me, si yo estoy comprando un terreno para una silencia, pasarme una tarde silenciosa, digo, yo no estoy, no estoy en contra que tengan ellos fiestas particulares. Es, no, no son todos los días. Pero ya siendo comercial va a ser recurrente. Entonces yo quisiera también mi paz del terreno que yo compré. Porque lo compré por ser una zona privilegiada y una zona de, con mucha, de gente antigua de ahí de los Benson. Y lo compré y digo, no me molesta. Lo único es si van a manejar el ruido, no hay, por mí no hay problema.
Señor, si nos podría dar su nombre y dirección?
Jesús Flores, three, three mil dos, New House Circle.
Jesús Flores, eh, eh, three, eh, tres mil dos, New House Circle.
Bueno, perdón, usted estaba presente en la última audencia.
Sí.
Sí?
Sí.
Usted fue uno de los personas que apareció, okay.
Señor Jesús, usted es el que está al lado derecho de él, viendo para el sur?
Sí, en la mer esquina.
Okay.
En la mer esquina, estamos construyendo una casa.
Sí, okay, que está metida para, para abajo.
En New, sobre New House.
O la casa que están construyendo apenas.
Sí.
Sí, señor. Usted está para el lado izquierdo.
Al izquierdo. Gracias.
Gracias. Anybody else?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm, uh, the neighbor on lot forty-one in Los, in Los Ven- Los Benidons. Uh, I actually live in, in Saintsville, four, three, one, two, Saintsville. And, uh, I've heard about this, this rezoning, and, uh, I'm against it. Because also, I have the same problem of the, of the noise. I actually live already on lot number one, and, uh, weekend after the first, uh, hearing, they had a party, and I live right now there, and I could hear all the so- all the sound and, and vibration of the party they had, so I'm against it. That's all I can say, thank you.
Would you have your name, please?
Your name, please?
My name is Giovanni Bernal.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Bernal, I'm sorry, just to come, uh, clarify, you live in lot one, right off New House, New House?
Correct.
Estate subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, I have the investment on lot number forty-one, that's.
Oh, I see, so you own those two lots?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Okay, anybody else? For or against? Permission?
I'm not sure if this is the right fit. I'm, I would make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
This is a motion, who made a motion, or what?
I did.
Commissioner.
Motion to deny.
To do what?
To deny the rezoning request.
What was, what was brought by Planning and Zoning?
To deny, I think it was disapproval, right, Mr. Loza?
Correct, it was disapproved. Yes.
So you're approving that?
No.
No, I'm approving of the.
Denying the rezoning request, which aligns itself with P and Z's recommendation.
Approving P and Z. Well, this would be to be, well, you're already taking the vote, right?
I think we're dead.
You started the motion.
You started the motion. See, this would be where a PUD should be, to tell you exactly what they're doing. Because if not, you're, you're making this become a residential with, with a historic house that's there, okay? And what do you wanna make that? What, what do you wanna make? You're, 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 you're telling the owner of a, of a historic house here, that he has to make it residential. Okay? Well, if, you know, a PUD would say, this is what we're going to do, and will never be done anything else but that. But he explained, a historical site with whatever, to, to have, you know, some, some commercial value as for a, uh, an event center, you know, for the lack of word, bad terms. Okay? I mean, to me, that's, that's the way to preserve historical site.
Yes, sir.
It's a, it's a beautiful center, Tony, I don't know if you've seen it before, it's really nice. The entrance is nice, and, I mean, it's a nice place.
Now, the, now the problem is, like I said, two of the visitors, I mean, two of the opponents are saying that it's a, it's a, it's a sound problem, that they have a sound problem. You know, how can, how can that, with a PUD, how can that be resolved? Because we do have noise levels.
Correct.
Okay, ordinances.
It, it, it can be the denying of, uh, amplified music and noise outs, outdoors.
It could be what?
To deny or not, not permit any kind of, uh, music outdoors.
That would be later on, and then an application for the use.
For the CUP.
That'd be for an operator permitted a CUP.
But it, it can be part of the, well, what the, he was asking, how can we make it happen, there'll be a way to make it happen.
Yeah, the applicant wouldn't be able to apply for that CUP under an R one, and so.
Please, please, you're gonna say something, say it to them, if I can hear you?
Yes, sir, sorry. I was saying that, uh, the noise, uh, suggestions that Commissioner Cavista de Vaca was suggesting wouldn't be part of this rezoning request, we can't put any noise limitations on that through here, but we could work with the applicant to look at planned unit development or other options.
Yeah, I, I agree that this isn't the body to, to make this, you know, I can't make you wanna do a PUD to, to work this thing out. But I think that what you express, President Owner, is so ideal, and so beautiful, that, you know, I would like for you to pursue that, and work it out with the neighbors, that you could do something to preserve. I mean, I, I went to that house when I was twenty years old, eighteen years old, you know, two or three times. And it, it is a historical site, and it, it belongs to a historical family. And, and it would be ideal if we could preserve it. So how do we?
The, the only way.
We can deny it today.
Well, no, you, you can, you, well, if, if, if the motion by Commissioner Haddad rescinds, you can table the items, so they can talk about the possible, the possibility of things that can happen without denying it right now, and then we can revisit the matter.
I think, I think when we table something, we expect it to return.
It will return.
It will, within what I would say is an immediate future, a reasonable amount of time. This project to some extent has no deadline on it. I'm gonna maintain my motion, but I agree with Commissioner Aguirre about that the project does have some, some appeal. But we rezoned today, you could say the house is too much trouble, knock it down, and put up steel warehouses. So I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, unless he pursues, maybe it's premature, but maybe you should pursue some type of local historical designation, followed by maybe a state level designation, which would start to apply restrictions to what you can do to the house. You know, you're talking about, you don't really wanna change it, but you wanna have an event center. Talking about hundreds of parking spaces, you've got to expand the restroom facilities significantly, you're talking about ADA. You, it's very far from being something, I think, similar to Quinta, but I see that, I see that similar vision, I really do. Quinta started out as a residence, and
It was a residence, yeah.
When, no one ever believed it could be converted into, uh, what it is today. So I admire the vision, but I think we're, we're very far removed from that, and I think you have the opportunity to pursue it, and bring it back to the commission with a, a fuller plan, but I would, I would still maintain my motion for today.
Well, I, I, I think, uh, we've never had so much discussion after a vote had already been taken, but I think, I think staff knows what, what we're talking about. Next item.
So, what did you take it?
Yes.
We did, the first and a second.
Yes, there was a, a, a motion by Commissioner Haddad, a second by Commissioner Somora, and the, the, it, that motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item number three is the rezoning, uh, the property is located at forty-three, twenty-one North Twelfth Street, on the corner of Twelfth and Redbud. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to, from R one to R three to build a town ho- home. The west of, uh, west side of North Twelfth is all single-family, average lot size of a thousand, five thousand square feet or larger. This request would change the characteristic of the west side of Twelfth Street. Yes, all the homes on the east side of North Twelfth are zoned townhomes, however, that plat- plat notes also states that all end lots shall have a width of thirty feet and, uh, three thousand square feet. All of the end lots meet this requirement except for this lot. Uh, if they were to build the townhome, they would have to comply with setback requirements. So of course, the side yard on, for the, the street side would be ten, and the interiors would be five feet. So that would only give them five feet left for construction. Uh, there is a stipulation on new R three states that a shared wall can have zero lot line, however, it's not a shared wall. It would be a, a wall on its own, so it has to be the five feet.
Okay, anybody here to speak against the item? Okay.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission of June third, no one appeared in op- uh, we had, no one appeared in opposition, but we had, uh, we did, uh, let the board know that we had gotten calls on it, and after the board meeting, we did have, um, a petition, uh, that was submitted at thirty-three percent at the, on the two-hundred-foot radius, and then we also got a petition for one percent in favor. The board members voted to recommend, uh, approval of the rezoning request.
Approval?
Yes.
This is recommended for approval by Planning and Zoning Mayor, but due to the petition that's been verified, it does require a super majority to approve.
But, but did I understand correctly, they have five feet to construct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yes, sir. Does the applicant know that? Yes.
They're stating they have zero, but they don't have zero, 'cause the ordinance specifically states it has to be a shared wall for zero.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'm the owner of the lot. Uh, I, I did the blueprint for the floor plan. Uh, I can fit a townhouse there, and the lot is the, the only lot that is R one in all the plot of the subdivision. So all of the other lots are, uh, townhouses. Uh, so I know that there was a restriction, I've been working with zoning and planning to, to develop a townhouse there with all the restrictions that they have, and I did it. So I, I want to, to build it.
But it would have to be zero lot line?
If you had a shared wall. If you have shared wall with a neighbor to the west, it has, they have six feet, so it would have, have a fact separation.
Okay. Questions?
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
My name is Saragosa Canales.
Mr. Canales?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Canales, were you the same property owner when you came here about five or six years, years ago?
Seven years ago.
For the same zone?
Yes.
Can I ask you why you came back?
Yes, because I'm, I'm dreaming, dreaming about it. We, we want to build something there, we love the area, we love the, the neighbor, um, and it's, it's what I do, it, it was a challenge for me. I, I study architecture in Mexico, so I'm an architect. So for me, it was a challenge to build, uh, like, design something in that lot, and I did it.
Now, you made a statement that it was multifamily, but at least on our picture that's being depicted, it's a single family.
Uh, yes, like, the, all the subdivision, that is, uh, North Place, uh, townhouses, is, all of the lots are townhouses. That is the only lot that, that was left on R one. So I'm trying to change it to R three, so I can build a townhouse.
But you understand everything to the west of that is R one, and to the northwest is R one?
Yes.
So that's all single-family?
Yes. I know that.
So that, would he be even able to build anything there?
I.D.Y. I'm sorry? Unless it goes to zoning board of adjustments or, uh, uh, side yard setbacks. Right, that, that's where this would end up going, to the zoning board of adjustments to request a variance.
Okay, anybody speak against the item, ma'am?
Come forward.
Hello, city commissioners, I mean, mayor and city commissioners, I'm here again.
Thank you, Omar.
I'm sorry, um, I'm here for the second time to oppose this, uh, rezoning from an R one to an R three. As residents at twelve oh one Redbud Avenue for nearly over forty years, for nearly forty years, we, we respectively urge you to vote against the proposed rezoning at four, three, two, one Redbud Avenue, from an R one, single-family home residential to an R three, high-density residential. It is crucial that the division align with the best interests of the existing community, and preserve it to the character of the quality of life that my husband and I, children, and the residents have worked so hard to establish. The area for the proposed rezoning is small, there is a fire hydrant with, um, at the corner with wild, water lines underneath of the proposed zoning area. Um, if the rezoning is allowed to move forward, it will increase the traffic, increase parking, and additional trash and recycling bins would have to be, um, um, is, uh, placed in a narrow, um, alleyway. And that therefore would, um, obstruct the view from traffic, uh, passing, or turning left and right. For the past forty years, we've maintained, um, the yard as our own property. We've landscaped it, we've planted trees, live oak trees that are full grown. And, um, we have neighbors walking their children, walking their pets. It's a very quiet neighborhood, I've known the mem- uh, the members of the community for a long time, and I have, um, many here with me, rep- opposing the air, uh, the rezoning. If this is approved, our quality of life will change, because it would obstruct the view of what, the west windows, which we use, we open every morning. Never has anyone stated, when we've worked on the yard there, that it's their property, that.
Let me ask, any other neighbor here that was against it? Alrighty then. Well, I don't think we wanna hear from all of you.
I think, well, I think we, we, I've reviewed it.
I, I think we have, the issue has been presented before to the commission, I think, years ago. I think based on what our staff is, is saying, it'd be very difficult to, to build something. I don't think it would increase traffic, 'cause it's only five feet. Uh, I don't think you can build, uh, what, what are the?
I make a motion to deny a request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item C.
Thank you, Mrs. Duig.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Item one C is a conditional use permit, uh, and, uh, for a bar at, located at eleven, I'm sorry, yeah, eleven four South Twentieth, it's on Twentieth and Beaumont, this is, uh, has been renewed, it got, uh, dissipate, uh, disapproval with favorable recommendation.
Anybody here against that item? Anybody against that item? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, next item.
Item number two is a conditional use permit for a, another bar, and this is located at four hundred Nolana. This, uh, section of Nolana and Sixth Street has, uh, multiple bars, but this also got disapproved with favorable recommendation because of the require, uh, the distance to the family's, uh, zone on the.
Anybody to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak against that item?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, next item.
Item number three is a conditional use permit for, uh, and three years for an event center. Uh, this is on the corner, uh, at, uh, two, 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 eight, uh, Trenton Road, on the corner of, uh, North Twenty-third and Trenton. Uh, the board did, uh, recommend disapproval with recom- uh, dispro- uh, disapproval with favorable recommendation with, for the distance, but they did not vote on ex, uh, approval of the three years, since they couldn't vote for the three years, that's something that you guys would have to, the commission board would have to vote on.
Okay, anybody speak against this item?
An event center for Freedom Bank?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's, it's.
It's not gonna be a bank.
Huh? It's not gonna be a.
The bank is the applicant, but that's not going to be the use.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe we'll have fun?
Yeah, motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
So that's for three years?
Motion.
Okay.
Okay, next item.
Uh, request of, uh, this is item for an event center, and this is located at thirty, a conditional use permit at thirty, twelve, South Jackson Road. This event center has been there for years, and it's just one of those items has been renewed, it's got, uh, disapproval with favorable recommendation.
Motion to approve, come.
Well, anybody here to speak against the item? Anyone here to speak against the item, if not, they're being a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, next item.
Another conditional use, uh, permit for a tavern, this is at fifty-one thirteen North Tenth, this is, uh, just, uh, uh, North Tenth, just south of Zinnia. This also got disapproval with favorable recommendation because of the residents to the west.
Anybody to speak against this?
I just wanna be clear, this is a tavern, not a bar, right?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Because there is a difference.
Against?
They told this tavern.
Motion carries, may I have a motion to amend the zoning ordinance, City of McAllen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries, we have present agenda, items A through L, do we need to pull anything? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries, item four.
Mayor, item four A is an award of contract for the purchase, an emergency, well, a purchase of the Emergency Management Command trailer. Uh, L V does here to talk on that one. I got ahead of myself, I thought it was, uh, air conditioners.
Public workers seeking authori- authorization to award a purchase contract to Phoenix Contracting from Ruskin, Florida for a purchase of a twenty-eight Mobile Command trailer at a price of a hundred forty-nine thousand eight seventy. Uh, Phoenix Contracting is the low bidder. Funding for this is a partial grant funded by the US, the Office of the Governor, Governor and Homeland Security Grant. and Homeland Security Grant for ninety thousand five hundred dollars and partially the sanitation fund for fifty-nine thousand three sixty-nine. This command trailer will be equipped with all the necessary amenities for response to be used by the city's emergency management department along with Public Works for, uh, deployment and, uh, emergency response. Staff recommends approval.
Questions?
So move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item.
Mayor, item four B is consideration approval of emergency purchase for, uh, air conditioners at Central Fire Station. That building is op, uh, operating on the original equipment that was installed at the time that building was constructed. Uh, the air conditioners on, uh, one half of the top second floor of that building are really no longer functional, uh, and not repairable. And so with the summer runs are coming.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, item five A is, uh, consideration of an ordinance amending, uh, the authorized positions, police department. This is a modification to, uh, change two peace officer positions to a sergeant and a lieutenant. If there are questions for the police.
You have questions, so move.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Thank you, chief.
Motion carries.
Mayor, item five B is providing for the abandonment of a five-foot utility easement adjacent to South Property Line, Lot Forty-five Taylor Crossing subdivision. Uh, this is at sixty thirteen North Fifty-first Street.
I take it we don't need it?
Correct. The only issue.
All utilities have been notified and.
There's nothing there. So the only thing is they, the applicant built their porch in that area, so they have to go to ZB away.
Got it.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item C.
Five C is an abandonment of a point one-one-eight acre tract of land at thirty-four oh one La Lomita Road.
Same thing?
The same, well, this one, it's, it's a right-of-way, so it kind of deadends to the canal, so it really can't go anywhere. So everybody was in a favor and disapprove, a vote.
So, so move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item six.
Mayor, item six A is, uh, a resolution authorizing an application for the twenty-twenty-five Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. Call for projects under category ten and seven.
So submission of application, do I have motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again. This is your first chance. Motion carries. You didn't move faster next time, Mrs. Goss. You can stay after school.
Mayor, item seven A is consideration of a variance, uh, to right-of-way block length, uh, sidewalks, various other items at thirty-three, twenty-four North Taylor Road.
So the development, uh, team has reviewed this one and is in compliance with everything. So they, a development team approved everything. So it's just, for item number one, is they're providing fifty feet of right-of-way with forty feet of paving with an additional ten-foot utility easement, so that we still get our sixty. And then their item number two is the, their property is, um, at the, at east side, so really, um, forty-eighth, they did, they did provide forty-eighth street. And then item number three is, uh, they're going to do the, on the south portion, the, the second street